We had technical difficulties with presentation that will be given shortly. Call to order, report of selectmen, highway commissioner, cemetery commissioners, meeting at 6:38. First order business, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Two hundred republics, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, to the Webster-Dudley Veterans Council, and more importantly, to the family of Joseph LaPlante from Dudley, ah Webster, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you folks know Joe, he just passed away at 100. He was a World War II veteran, Order of Purple Heart, um, I can't say it, but he got the medal from France, for liberating France from the Germans. Joe and his family, long-term Webster-Dudley veteran supporters, and at 100 years old, I'd have to say he had a life well-lived. On behalf of the board, in the town, to the Webster-Dudley Veterans Council, and more importantly, the family of Joseph LaPlante, we send our condolences. Next up, approval of minutes, minutes, August 5th, 2000, oh, sorry, this meeting is being recorded. Thank you to the person in Illinois who filed the complaint. Approval of minutes, August 5th, 2024. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes, written.
Second, motion made by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Siganovich. Any question, concerns or corrections? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next up, citizens' comments. Anybody wishing to speak tonight on a matter not on the agenda that does not require a vote of the Board of Selectmen, please come forward and identify yourself.
Can I sit?
That's better for you.
Good evening, I'm Eileen I of 36 Fish Road. I'm here tonight to speak about my concerns about the Fish Road Soil Reclamation Project. The first pieces of information I have are direct quotes from the WLFrench.com website about this very project. The Fish Road Reclamation Project in Dudley, Massachusetts opened in 2018 and accepts soil with up to 850,000 tons of elevated levels of naturally occurring arsenic. Fish Road is the only facility in Massachusetts accepting soils with elevated levels of naturally occurring arsenic. My first question is, why is this being allowed? Some of my neighbors have indeed found elevated levels of arsenic in their well water, and this is a recent development. When you do a quick search and check the facts against numerous websites, you can usually find the health risks that occur from elevated levels of arsenic. For example, long-term chronic effects from arsenic in the water can include numerous skin conditions, diabetes, increased risk of cancers in many body systems, as well as reduced intelligence in children, premature term birth, increased death in young adults, respiratory disease disorders of most of the human body systems, and including the reproductive system. If we live in an area within a band that extends from central Massachusetts through parts of New Hampshire that already have elevated levels of naturally occurring arsenic, and there are serious side effects, then why is Dudley an acceptable place to be the only place in Massachusetts to accept soil containing it? Why would Dudley accept it at all? Why would a business be a priority over the health of its residents? If we are in this band where it is higher than normal already, then we certainly don't need additional arsenic being brought into our town, our area, and our neighborhood that can only amplify the problem and increase the odds of developing one or more of the listed health conditions. If my children choose to have their own children in the future, then I want it to be just that, their choice, and not become their choice because of reproductive issues that have arisen from higher levels of arsenic in our well water. Which brings me to my next area of concern. It suggests that the Fish Road Soil Reclamation Project is potentially bringing in soil that is contaminated with PFAS-6, or forever chemicals. It is already noted that another part of town is struggling with PFAS in the drinking water supply. It is true that PFAS has been around for a long time, comes from products that we all use in our homes regularly, and that it is a national issue, and that they are forever chemicals, and they do not break down easily, if ever at all. On October 2nd, 2020, Mass DEP published its PFAS drinking water standard at 20 parts per trillion. This regulation may be met by the reclamation project, but PFAS could still be included. The side effect of PFAS on humans are interference with our endocrine system, so in other words, the body system that manages our hormones, and the body can't function properly without regulated hormones. It can change our bodies, our brains, and even cause death. Other dangers of PFAS include kidney and testicular cancer, liver, thyroid issues, and a plethora of reproductive issues, just to name a few. If you look at the 850-page document from the Phase 1 Initial Site Investigation Report for the Fish Road Reclamation Project from the CMG Environmental, Inc., then you can see that there are results from testing that do show slightly elevated levels of PFAS in some of the tests done at the Fish Road site. The findings show 28.8 parts per trillion when the DEP standard is set to 20 parts per trillion. There are wells back there that did test at or below the standard, but it is still a fact that there are wells tested above the DEP standard. Now, there was new tests done recently that showed that one of the wells came back with 90 parts per trillion. This is serious, it's unacceptable, this is our health on the line. Correlation does not always mean causation, but it sure has a strong connection that the levels have been on the rise since the increased activity of the Fish Road Soil Reclamation Project site. There are other sources of PFAS trying to be blamed for the increase in our area, but these other sources have been around for decades. The issues in our area only started to truly become serious since the onset of the reclaimed soil on Fish Road, starting in 2018. So in this case, it certainly seems that correlation just may be the causation. We're told that the companies bringing the soil from other places like Boston and the surrounding area have signed affidavits, signing that they're bringing in clean soil to dump at the Fish Road site. That's all well and good, but is it indeed true? Is the soil being tested for PFAS, or are the affidavits supposed to be enough of reassurance for us? Honestly, these affidavits are not enough of reassurance to bet my children's health on it, or mine for that fact. I want evidence that it is truly clean and safe. CMG even states in the Phase 1 report that it is possible that more than, that one or more loads of soil imported are contaminated with PFAS. If this is the case, even with it just being a possibility, then should regular testing of the soil be mandatory to protect the health of the residents of this town? Is this a requirement in our own Dudley Soil Bylaws? There are other documents from the DEP Bureau of Waste Site Cleanup and Release Log Form that show hazardous materials to the soil or groundwater, and in this case, groundwater on January 9th, 2023, which indicates that it contained PFAS-6, and was delivered, or attempted to be delivered, at the Fish Road site. If this is the case, and this one truck was caught, then how many are simply getting through due to the mere affidavits being signed? To give you a visual, I have these cards. Each card represents one truckload, meeting the standard of 20 parts per billion, 20, sorry, parts per trillion. Now, let's suppose one of these trucks comes in once a week and is dumping this clean soil, and I use that term loosely, and is deposited in the same location. Over a year, you have 52 truckloads that have all been deposited with PFAS in one area. Of course, it's still technically 20 parts per trillion, and following the acceptable standard, even though it meets the standard, there's still an increased amount of PFAS in one area, so it's concentrated. It's put there intentionally. This increases the risk of the Dudley residents, there is an increased risk of leaching into the ground, getting into the groundwater, and making its way into the aquifer we're pulling our drinking water from. So why is this acceptable? Why is it being allowed? I understand the affidavits are signed, but if the soil is not being tested, then is taking the word of companies that do not have a connection to our town of Dudley a solid reason to risk the health of our residents? There is no connection to this town other than being a dumping ground for what they don't want in their areas because of the risks. So therefore, they have no interest in the health and the risks to our residents. I ask you, this is the board, do you want this dumped in your backyard? Because this is being dumped in my backyard, and some of my other neighbors that are here. Would you be willing to accept several loads of it, potentially contaminated soil, literally right in your backyard? If the elevated arsenic and PFAS cause major health risks that can lead to death, then why would the board allow this to happen in our town? Is this really a risk the town is willing to take? Is the town willing to gamble the health of our residents? I certainly hope not, considering PFAS is already in so many things and can have severe health risks, then why would Dudley intentionally increase the risk to the residents of this town? Please make this make sense. What I'm seeking is that this board make sure that it gets across to the Board of Health and everybody else. We want assurances that our drinking water is going to remain safe for the health of everybody in this town, specifically speaking for my family and my neighborhood. I thank you for your time this evening.
So what I can tell you, or I can tell anyone that has questions, Mr. Ruder has it on his administrator's report, but currently, our town council has engaged DEP, who has oversight of the project.
Yep.
On September 9th, we have invited, and DEP has accepted the invitation, Mary Jude Pixley, I don't want to misstate her title, she's-
She's the regional director.
Regional director. She said she will be here to answer any questions, any and all questions. Our council has also engaged council of the operators of the pit, in order to have them come in with their LSP to do a public meeting. We're working on a date to make that available. It is an issue we take extremely serious. The changing standards at the DEP, George could speak to it better than I can, dropped the acceptable standard as we know, and it's, we're taking it very seriously. I'm on town water, and we just had to pay 11 million to take PFAS out of town water. So please bring your concerns on the night, that'll be the night to get the experts here.
I will definitely be there.
And we encourage all residents to come with your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, anybody else like to speak? Mr. Lyons. You can take the podium or the table, whatever's better for you, sir.
I'd just like to say that I thought that was an excellent presentation from my neighbor, and she covered most everything that I was going to ask. If anyone has looked at the Board of Health agenda for tomorrow night, I'll read you the quote, "DEP Notification of New PFAS Release at Fish Road." Does the board know, or has been notified about any new release of PFAS at Fish Road? Because that's on the agenda for the Board of Health to discuss tomorrow.
I'm going to defer to the administrator, but I'm fairly certain we have been notified.
We get regular notifications, usually through the Board of Health, it usually goes to that office first. But, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will say, and maybe preempt my own report here, just, Ms. I's presentation was excellent, and we had a very, and I reached out and personally spoke to Mary Jude Pixley, who's the director of the Worcester Region for DEP. Not as eloquently, but I expressed very similar concerns as to what's going on, how we have members of the community showing up to Board of Selectmen meetings with these concerns, and that, you know, I asked them if they could please come in and answer any questions relative to PFAS arsenic releases, that sort of thing. And she is, and she was willing to do that. DEP is the lead agency in terms of investigating that site, and they're there frequently. And as much as the town, town government would like to hear from DEP what the situation is there, I know that people who live on that road want to hear about it even more so. So September 9th is going to be the day to show up and ask any questions, whether you live on Fish Road, what Eagle Drive, or you're dealing with the Webco mitigation situation, or anything else like that. That would be the time to come and ask the questions of the experts. They're going to have the regional director here, and they're going to have the person in charge of the 21E program, which will be an opportunity for you to get specific questions answered. The town is following it closely, but again, DEP is the lead agency. And we're getting to the point now, and I agree 100% that we need some, some feedback from DEP to the town and to the community, and not just, you know, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're investigating. We need to have some information provided. Because you get notification of releases, the town gets notifications of releases, and then we get silence. So hopefully, September 9th will bring some of these things to light. And we are working with the owners and operators at Fish Road LLC to have their LSP come in and have a specific conversation with the neighborhood. And if there's a problem, I know that this board is committed, the Board of Health is committed, and the town is committed to make sure that it's remediated immediately.
I brought up Fish Road because it was part of the quote, but Oxford Ave, last meeting, I discussed Oxford Ave and Fish Road. I don't want anybody to think that I'm just concentrating on Fish Road. And I'd like to reinforce that I think, whether it's the town or DEP, they should do soil samples, water testing samples, groundwater testing, and they should, and that would be one of my questions at the next meeting, are they planning on testing homeowners' wells to see if there are elevated contaminants, let's say, found in the well water, and then try and determine where the origin is from those sources?
So it will probably be, the operators will be ordered to provide testing in a situation where there's a release that's been designated by DEP. For example, the town's landfill is under an immediate response action, where the town is responsible, as well as Gentex, to test for contaminants in wells, and install, and install poet systems which are point-of-entry filtration systems into homes on Eagle Drive. So it's generally the people who are, who are held responsible for the release or the contamination that provide that testing, but they do so with, with an order from DEP.
All right, I, we'll be back. I'm sure there was many people on September 9th. Thank you very much for your time.
No, again, as an aside, although I have not spoken to, I'm not sure if Mr. Ruder has, we were also made aware that because of the proximity, I believe, of the Quinnebarne River, the flood control, Army Corps of Engineers are also involved. So, yeah, there is definitely full, full attention as best we can. Again, like I said, I'm not trying to drag Georgia in, they've been dealing with PFAS for several years now. They were ahead of the curve, the Water Department. So it is definitely a front burner issue, and I hope we have to open up the back doors to let people in on September 9th, get our answers.
Will it be publicized?
It already is, it's on the website. Mr. LaPlaca has already posted the meeting on the website. We're publicizing it through our meetings on our Facebook page.
It's on the electronic sign outside, it's on the inside sign.
Okay, it's everywhere we can have it.
We didn't, we actually, Mr. Chairman, didn't get the, I didn't get a commitment until Thursday when the agenda was posted. And I had spoken to Olivia, and we were going to actually send notification to all the people who lived on Fish Road, but there just wasn't enough time. They literally, Thursday night, confirmed that they'd be here on the 9th, so.
Again, I, I would suggest Oxford Ave, since the dumping went on there longer than Fish Road, that people in Oxford Ave should be aware of potential problems. So, but I thank you very much.
Also too, we also have confirmation, State Rep Massey should be present, and a representative of State Senator Fatman's office just confirmed this afternoon. So we got people's attention.
Very good.
They're doing the best we can also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Laura Tenelli, I live at 33 Fish Road. So my question is, has the town hired an LSP? And if not, are you planning to, and will that company pay, the company that is bringing in the soil pay for it as it is outlined in our Dudley Soil Bylaws?
Turn to Mr. Ruder on that one.
158 dash four, number seven.
So we want to, we want to have a communication with DEP before we hire an LSP to see what we'd be hiring the LSP to do. But that's not other question, and as you mentioned, it would probably be the operator would be responsible to pay that bill.
Yeah, okay, that is in the bylaws.
We just need more communication from the lead agency, which is DEP, to the town in order to figure out the next steps.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And again, we, the information we will have, all we provide on September 9th, I'm not trying to defer anybody to that night, but that is looking like a pretty key date in our calendar.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We appreciate the participation.
Hi, I'm Sandy Lehto from 38 West Dudley Road. When you send out those notices to Fish Road, can you include West Dudley? I, I'm on the corner of Fish and West Dudley, I want to be notified of that. I, I'm on the corner of Fish and West Dudley, want to be notified of that stuff.
We did.
Actually, the people on Fish Road, West Dudley, Intervale and Sales, we all pull off the same aqua four, so all of them, you know, it has to be more of an effort to notify the public. Not everybody has the internet. There's a lot of elderly people where I live, some of them don't even get the newspaper anymore. But if you could try to put out and, you know, the notification to include all of those people, and of course Oxford Ave, you know, all of them. I have, God, I have so many questions, but I'm only, I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask yet. I'm just, I'm just.
I mean, feel free, honestly, we'll do the best we can. We're not hiding anything. And if we don't have the answer, I will tell you.
So I noticed that the release related to the January 2023 PFAS release, there was, you know, a notification that went into the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, like more, like, and it didn't have, it didn't go into the Worcester Telegram and Gazette until like 2024, 5/2024 or something. Why wasn't it put on the town website? Why is it only that this CMG Benson has to notify, you know, put it in the, in the newspaper? It says he has to notify the public when, you know, of these releases. But he put it in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette in the paper, but not, Dudley didn't, like, our town hall didn't put it on the website. You know, we're getting warnings about Tripoli, but we didn't get anything about, you know, can, can, can we, you know, can you guys stress, ask them, oh, when you notify the public, can it be more than just the, in the Telegram Gazette?
Yes, but I don't know if you heard Mr. Ruda?
Yep, I did hear him. I'm just wanted to make sure.
No, again, this isn't a deflect-type thing. We did not get a notice airborne. It may have went to the Board of Health. We went through a couple of different Board of Health agents, and I think there's been some discovery of not, I'm not talking so much this incident, but there's been a discovery of documentation that came to the Board of Health. Previous Board of Health agent may, may or may not forwarded it. They had it, but they didn't. And I think the, just like us, we have to notify like a public hearing, because the state lays out certain steps you have to follow. And I get it, there's no such thing as too many steps.
Right.
And if the, the owners of the operation follow what the state tells them to do, yes, if we had more information at the time, obviously, we, I think we would have put it all out.
And which brings me to my last point. I just would like, you know, we've gone, like you just said, we've gone through a few Board of Health agents that maybe didn't know what to do with stuff, or maybe, you know, there was some transitioning things, and, you know, how important it is to keep the one we have to finish this. You know, I, I, I just want to stress how important it is to keep the same people working on the same things as long as we can, instead of, you know.
Well, to be fair too, I've been involved a long time. This is the first time that the town has had funding for a full-time Board of Health agent. At one point, we were trying to get by, was it five hours a week, or we cheered with?
It makes sense that things would go on notice.
Correct. No one's here, I mean, we have staff, up until, excuse me, one of the things Mr. Ruda did, we took over, we organized part-time jobs that have full-time coverage. So at least now we have a full-time admin person. Before, once again, we had a five-hour-a-week person, and that's not a cop-out, that's a fact. Now we have a full-time person covering three departments, but they're here, and we have a full-time agent, excuse me, a little raspy today, which we never had before. So whether it's this gentleman or somebody else, I think, I think you'll find things will be handled much more efficiently, for the want of a better term.
Well, it's very important that things be handled much better than they have been. I'm happy that we have a full-time Board of Health agent that seems to really kind of know what he's doing.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's good. And I just want to make sure that I put that out there, that I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
And again, as Mr. Lyons said, they have a meeting tomorrow.
Yep.
And folks are welcome to come to our meetings, we'll do the best we can too.
Yep, we'll be here, thank you.
Nope, thank you. Anybody else? Again, I thank everyone, and I'm going to emphasize it every meeting up until it comes, September 9th is when you want to be here. Get your answers right from the source. Next up on the agenda, it's going to be frozen. We have reappointments. Caitlin Rosina Hansen, the Agricultural Advisory Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2027. Is Caitlin here? She is not. So usually on a reappointment, we don't have people come in per se, so what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Caitlin Rosanis Hansen to the Agricultural Advisory Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Motion by Mr. Sigonevich.
Second.
Second by Mr. Landry. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Also to the administrator, now that the growing season is winding down, maybe we can get a update from the Agriculture Advisory Commission on what they've done and where they stand on different things, and either they just send in a written report.
We can certainly ask them to come in.
Yeah, be nice. Mr. Sigonevich.
Yes, I, when I was chair last term, I was invited to one of their meetings, and I went, they've done a number of things. One thing they do that I think is really neat, they either through grants or through, funded through the town budget, they buy books, and they go to the schools and they teach children about how to grow tomatoes. I mean, things, things that a lot of us learned when we were kids that are kind of going by the wayside, and just, you know, teaching kids good stuff. And they, they, they do that, they have a number of things, like the plant hop, where you could go between different farms to buy plants. I just think they do a lot of really good things for the community. I know a lot of people have said in the past, this is a farming community, an agricultural community, and they're actually doing something, keeping that alive, so. But, but I agree, it would be great. I'm sure I didn't do justice to what they do. I, I left impressed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? You know, I know they're also very active with the, kind of hand-in-hand a lot with the Dudley Conservation Trust. They used to have their farmers' markets and their plant sales. So, yeah, it'd be nice to get them in, and we can get an update. Next up on the public business, we have a toll booth request with the Blessed Backpack Brigade on Saturday, August 31st, 2024, nine, I'm sorry, 8 to noon. Is our representative here? Come on up. Thought that was you, Laura. I'm on my glasses. Good evening, Laura, how are you?
I'm good, Sully, how are you?
Good, thanks.
The Blessed Backpack Brigade is a small organization. We've been in existence since 2017. And what we do is we feed the homeless and provide them with necessities that they need, sleeping bags and toiletries and clothing. We provide free meals on the streets every other Sunday, down by the train, which is where most of them congregate. And we'd like to have a toll booth to raise money so that we can continue to do so.
Excellent. Any questions for Laurie Joseph? So I'm sure they must have applied, there's no toll booths the week before, the week after, the way we do it, everything, it's all set.
Mr. Chairman, this has been on the list for this agenda for, I would say, about two months now, so I don't see any conflict.
All right, police?
No issues at all, we'll try to help them out.
Okay, I know Fire Chief's not here, we'll just reach out to him, but you guys know the setup, you know how to do it. All right, Laurie, good luck.
Thank you.
Hope you make a lot of money.
Thanks.
Like a motion, Mr.?
Motion to approve the request on Saturday, August 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Mr. Landry?
Second.
Mr. Sigonevich? Any further discussions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up, Nicole Messia, Library Director with a library update. Nicole?
Hi, how's everybody?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'll keep it short and sweet. So all this information's going to be right up on our website starting tomorrow after the meeting. But I wanted to give you some, a quick snapshot of how we ended FY '24. It's when we do all our state reporting. So we have some good news, good numbers to show, so I just wanted to share them. Our library visitors are up this year. This has been another strange year for us, July, last July, and August, although we were open, people were very unsure if we were open, we were not working up with full staff. So we could see the numbers trending downwards for people or numbers through the door. So as you can see on this graph, it kind of shows you, I'm using pre-COVID as a benchmark for numbers moving forward, because that's really where we should be back at. So that, so moving forward, those are the types of numbers we're going to be looking at. So we are now fully recovered from COVID, so that's exciting news for us. Libraries had a really difficult time doing that, so it doesn't seem like a big deal, but people know that we're open, that programming is there for them and any other needs that they have. So that's exciting that that word is getting out. We currently have 5,900 cardholders. We're going to be talking about September being library card signup month in a minute. Room bookings have been really robust this year. The majority of the 568 reservations that you see, 331 of them are for study rooms. So that's not just kids and tutoring, that's people that are using the library as a remote work location, which we're seeing more and more of. And I think Webster Library is working on a grant to have, to redo one of their rooms for that. So we're definitely going to be watching to see what, what their trend is. The wireless, people using our wireless, that number has gone up to 1,948. At the same time, people using our public computers is declining a little bit, which we expect. But we are receiving updates or upgrades from CWMars to make sure that we have a really good wireless system for people that are using it. This past year, we circled forty, a little over 42,000 items. But the interesting number is the electronic usage, that has grown 23% year-over-year. So that means that we're not only keeping pace with our physical items, but our digital collection is growing too, which is pretty cool. Program attendance is good. We did have about 40 more programs this year, which is really amazing when you think about it. The bread and butter of the programming system is the children's library. And our children's librarian left in, I want to say October, so really, we didn't have any children's programming in November, December, January, February, that started in March. So this year, we're going to see huge growth in adults and children programming. We did see 4,233 attendees, which is very cool. But our big brag of this year, which we are very excited and proud of, technically shouldn't be on this report, Summer Reading is one of those programs that kind of straddles the fiscal year and the calendar year, because it starts in June. Our new fiscal year starts in July. But this year, we had 938 residents participate in Summer Reading. 450 of those were adults, our goal was 500. We kind of said that as a joke, but we really almost hit it, so that was kind of exciting. 347 children, and the number that we are most proud of is 141 teens. To get teens into a library in this day and age is a, it's amazing. We're so excited. We have a core group in town that are coming and making connections with the staff and their peers, and it's a, it's a great place for them to be. So we're very excited about that. Museum passes, we have, we're actually, we have 14 passes now. We renewed Equitarium, and the JFK Library and Museum in Boston is also free to all mass residents now. We did implement a reservation system starting in March of this year, so our numbers are much truer. There's a lot less estimating going on, which is cool. So we look forward to those passes being used. And that's our snapshot for the year. Does anybody have any questions?
I just had one, but you kind of beat me to it. I was going to ask about the teen room, because I know, I remember they used to be pretty active, especially pre-COVID.
Yep.
I remember kids would be in there playing their games or whatever.
Yeah, we're definitely seeing the teens coming back. We are trying to, we are a very welcoming library. That is a beautiful teen room. If the teens need a space to be safe and to act like teens, it's fine, we shut the door. We do very little shushing in the library. You've got to be acting pretty outrageous to get a shush from me.
With most of your staff.
Right, right. Usually the staff are the loudest people in the library, hands down, yes, that is, that is absolutely true. But it's nice to see the, the new teens coming back again. And the tweens, which are that age group now that aren't quite teens yet, are really venturing in there. So it's going to be interesting to see where the library goes over the next five years. We have a great space, we're very, very lucky, so thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Nicole?
Great job, keep up, good work, thank you.
Thank you. We're having a great time, which, oh, so the circulations, I get a little crazy with my graphs, but this is why I'm looking at the pre-COVID numbers. You can see in 2020 where COVID was, like, there was no such thing as physical circulations. And over time, we are slowly building, but it, we didn't really ever come back to where we should be. Right now, we're, we're there, so we're going to keep trending up for that. Okay, so we just finished Summer Reading, and now we're going into libraries is, September is library card signup month. It's an initiative that is, we're partnering with the American Library Association, and they have partnered this year with Transformers, and the theme is Libraries More Than Meets the Eye. So this is open to all first-time library cardholders. It doesn't matter how old you are, as long as you are over the age of five, you can come and get a library card. We have, we will have photo ops with Optimus Prime, which is going to be very cool, but we also have some initiatives to give away. The kids, we have lanyards, but our library assistant received a $7,000 donation from Project Limmer, which is a nonprofit company who specializes in empowering young girls and women. And we think there's nothing more empowering than information and makeup. So to the teens that come in and sign up for a library card, that will be their incentive. And of course, we'll have something for the young men that do that too. So if we look at census, I think we have approximately 2,900 residents between the age of five and 19. We have about 1,000 of those residents signed up for library cards right now, so hopefully we'll see, we'll get that other 1,000 piece in for library cards. And last thing, our library survey is live on our website. We've had 188 residents take the survey so far. It's open until September 30th. I have paper copies here, if anybody wants to see it, it's 12. Quick questions, just a way to have your voice heard as we start our strategic planning at the library for the next five years.
Excellent. Any follow-up questions for the librarian?
Mr. Chairman, in the future, would you have more slideshows or presentations like this? Because I'd be interested to see actually on these, as well as what you're doing now, what your goals are.
Absolutely.
And how far you got to them, and where you're going to go next time, so we can see you grow and maybe help.
Absolutely, yep. John has asked that I do a quarterly report. Our five-year plan that's on file with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners is expiring at the end of this year, so our goals will be new. And definitely, we want your input, and we want the community's input for where they would like to see the library, so, absolutely.
Thank you.
So Nicole, that committee that you just referred to, with the five-year plan, is that made up of your trustees and yourself, for example?
So, no, we actually, like, I have a whole plan of how it's going to happen. We're going to be doing some focus groups. I think I'm going to start them more towards October, when things slow down a little bit. But we're going to do community surveys, we're going to have soar exercises, we're going to have Questions of the Week posted at the library and other social media outlets, because we want to make sure that everybody is getting what they want and what they need, so, it's really important.
I would like to think we did the playground meeting here, where we invited everybody in town, but we emphasized the young children, and we were inundated with.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I bet you want 67 five-year-olds, but.
Well, anyone five and up, I mean, yeah, definitely, definitely, everybody, really, yeah.
Excellent. Excellent. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
I understand you have technical difficulties too.
I know, I'm sorry, next time I'm going to get it.
You're fine, don't worry. That's the worst, anything goes wrong today, we're having a good day.
Thank you.
So next up, Board of Selectmen to appoint Sarah Monjo as the Town Accountant effective August 8th, 2024. Take a vote or any other relative action thereto.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. James. Sorry, do you want to say?
No.
Any further comments, concerns, or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Welcome aboard again, Sarah. Town Administrator Report. Town Administrator to provide a public report to the Board of Selectmen to vote to accept and or take action relative thereto. Mr. Ruda?
Mr. Chairman, we-
Mr. Chairman, um, we, we've already gone over the, uh, meeting that's scheduled for September ninth. Um, just to reiterate, the meeting is available to all residents with concerns about private wells and mitigation of contamination, no matter where they live in town. DEP will be here and be able to answer any questions, or get answers to questions, especially with PFAS regulations are concerned. So, uh, as the, as the speakers were, were speaking, I thought maybe we could consider whether or not the Board thinks that a rave alert to go out in advance of that meeting would be worth it? That way it hits everybody in town?
I have a problem with that.
Okay. Right ahead, please. Okay, great, we'll do that. So, speaking of PFAS, a bill was recently signed by the Governor, a bill that would phase out the use of PFAS in firefighting gear. I'm sure some people have seen that on the news recently. PFAS is used in firefighting gear to repel water and other substances when firefighting, uh, and has been linked to cancer. Starting January twenty twenty-five, under the new law, manufacturers and sellers of personal protective equipment containing PFAS will be required to provide written notice to the purchaser at the time of the sale that firefighting equipment uh, contains PFAS chemicals. You're also mandated to provide a reason for why the equipment contains PFAS. Beginning in twenty twenty-seven, manufacturers and sellers of personal protective equipment for firefighters will be prohibited from knowingly selling gear containing intentionally added PFAS chemicals, referring to PFAS chemicals or products that break down into PFAS chemicals that are added to the product during manufacturing. So what that means for Dudley firefighters, um, and our ability to replace gear, uh, and the costs involved and the funding available to do so is something that Chief Kochinowski will be following and updating the Board as information becomes available. In other words, they're gonna ban it, and twenty, by twenty-seven, we're certainly gonna have to replace all the gear. So I'm sure that, that, the Fire Chief, who was unable, unable to attend tonight, will do what he does and go after any grant or additional sources of funding that may be available to replace gear for probably twenty-one people, which is not gonna be an inexpensive cost, but again, it's a cancer-causing agent, and we wanna make sure they're protected as well. Uh, as promised, Mr. Chairman, we've been having discussions with Town Council to review draft revisions to our communications policy relative to a recent legal opinion that was issued by the Supreme Judicial Court. There is a summary of the conversation available to the Board of Selectmen in the OneDrive that offers several options for the Board to consider. Again, that was between Council and I, um, by email, so, uh, eventually we'll release that information, but for now, it's, it's available to the Board of Selectmen to review. And based on the feedback that I received from the Board, we'll have a draft revision available for the Board of Selectmen to vote on at the next meeting. I'll also set the draft as an agenda item, um, coming up on the, I don't know, probably on September ninth, we'll have it ready to go. And then finally, we spoke, um, a few meetings ago about the holdup with the municipal energy aggregation application. The town meeting was approved and was sent to the DPU for review, for approval, I think we mentioned that at one point. The Board may recall that the review and approval was held up in the application process when the DPU's new guidelines came with very, very specific template to be utilized if the desired result was a hundred-and-twenty-day turnaround. So we started, we put in the application, a hundred-and-twenty-day turnaround, and they came up with a new template to follow that would achieve a hundred-and-twenty-day turnaround. But we're already in the process for a hundred-and-twenty-day turnaround. So the bottom line is, our legislators reached out and did what they could, but we haven't had great results with that. We're still gonna push the issue, I know there's a lot of cities and towns that are hot under the collar over this holdup. People are, you know, we're getting into the winter months, people wanna make sure that they can, uh, purchase their energy at a reduced cost, and municipal aggregation, you know, provides them with that opportunity. Um, so we're pushing it as far as we can, and, and I know that, uh, Representative Marcy and, and Senator Fatman have been on it. So we'll continue to update the public as that, uh, further information becomes available. There's also a letter we got from, that, that they sent back to us, the Department of Public Utilities from the town of Nino, that Board of Selectmen is facing the same problem. They, they put in an application, and during the application period, which was scheduled to take a hundred-and-twenty days, they changed the template and have to go back and redo it, and follow very specific changes that will, will result in further delays. And I'm considering whether or not we wanna put that up on social media, I think we probably will, just to give the community an idea as to what other cities and towns are facing, as well as Dudley, in terms of the, what I think is an artificial delay at the DPU level. So that's it for my, my report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for the Administrator? You know, I just wanna tech, piggyback with John. We've been pushing that energy aggregation for probably close to two years. And as he stated, it was originally told us was gonna be a four-month process, and the question I know I had at the time was, why would it take so long when they'd already approved X number of communities, I think it was about forty at the time? I mean, why couldn't they have a template in place? And as I think he stated, now we know why, they were changing the rules in the middle of the game. It looks like we're gonna have to get back in line and reapply.
So, the issue is they had a template in place, we followed, we, first of all, it gained local acceptance. So to me, if the town meeting votes to approve us being able to purchase, us being able to purchase, you know, different forms of energy, it shouldn't be much more than a rubber stamp, as far as I'm concerned. We, we've gained local approval, then we, then through our, uh, the Colonial Power Group, who we've chosen to broker this for us, uh, they followed the template and they filed the application to DPU. And after that was done, we followed step by step, the template, submitted the application, and in the middle of the period, they said, oh no, we've changed the way we're doing it, you have to start from scratch, essentially. So, why they do it is, well, I'll leave that to the imagination, but it doesn't help people trying to buy energy at this point, going into the winter months.
Right, it came up last year, right around this time, obviously, as cold weather's approaching, and we were told we were in the process. And guess what? We're in the process again, just a new process. Motion to accept the Town Administrator's report.
So moved.
Mr. Landry? Second. Mr. Sigunovich, any questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ruder?
Olivia wants to give an update on replacing the town planner, too.
Well, she's next. Assistant Town Administrator, report. Olivia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to start with a town planner update, as I'm sure you're aware, we currently have an interim part-time town planner due to our previous town planner's retirement. Um, and so that interim town planner, her name's Jacifa, and she works for CMRPC, but she's working for us on an interim basis as well. So last week, the Planning Board voted to pursue the regionalized part-time planner position. They also voted to create a subcommittee of two Planning Board members to help with the interview process of candidates. And then earlier today, John and I met with CMRPC and the Town Administrator from Spencer to discuss if regionalization is a viable option. That meeting went well, so, once we have some options to provide, we will turn it over to the Planning Board, and they can take it from there. For now, the contract with CMRPC to provide an interim part-time planner has been extended. And then moving on to community news, something I'm doing now in conjunction with our Public Information Office. The Boy Scout Troop Two Seventy-three Yard Sale, Saturday, September fourteenth, at the Universal Tag Parking Lot, Thirty-Sixth Hall Road. Early bird access is ten dollars from eight to nine AM, and regular access is free from nine AM to three PM. The Citizens Fire Academy is accepting applications, it's open to ages eighteen or older who live or work in Dudley. It's eight weeks of three-hour classes on Wednesdays at six PM, starting on October second, twenty twenty-four. The class size is limited to twelve students, and the application is available on the Fire Department's webpage. Contact Chief Kochinowski with any questions. COVID-nineteen test kits are available for free in the Board of Health Office for any residents who are looking to take care of that opportunity. And the state primary is going to be held on September third. Now, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to list off the six days of early voting, so people can be aware of this. So the state primary, like I said, is September third, twenty twenty-four. The early voting is in-person, all precincts to be held in Precinct Number One, Main Lobby. Early voting in-person for state primary will be held on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, from eight AM to two PM. Monday, August twenty-sixth, from eight-thirty to six PM. Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, from eight-thirty to four PM. Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, from eight-thirty to four PM. Thursday, August twenty-ninth, from eight-thirty to four PM. And Friday, August thirtieth, from eight-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM. Or you can vote on Election Day, State Primary Election on nine-three-twenty-four, the hours are seven AM to eight PM. The last day to register to vote is eight-twenty-four, at five PM, at the Dudley Police Station Lobby.
Thank you. Any questions for the Assistant Town Administrator? Hearing none, motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept, Assistant Town Administrator's report is ready.
Mr. Landry?
Second.
Mrs. DeShanes, any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Olivia. Departmental Communications, who would like to go first? How about you, George, tonight? Good? Things are good on Watersaw?
I'm all PFAS out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mr. Gasky? Good, good. Police Chief?
Uh, just real quick, uh, school starts, uh, Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. Um, we selected a new School Resource Officer, it's gonna be Officer Tyler Smith. Um, as the Board might remember, uh, when Officer Megas got hit by a car about a year ago, he filled in that spot for about three, four months, he did a great job, and he's gonna, I'm sure he's gonna be successful at it, um, this year. Uh, also, I, to some of the residents, if you see a unmarked cruiser behind a school bus, we're gonna try to ghost some of the school buses the first couple of days, making sure that everybody's abiding by the, uh, the laws to stop the school buses, so if you see an officer in an unmarked cruiser, don't be alarmed. And last but not least, Nicholas College is coming back this weekend, uh, most of the athletes already moved in. The other students are moving back in Friday and Sunday. There's gonna, they hired a police officer to assist with any traffic, uh, issues on Center Road. Um, and we will also be, uh, focusing on traffic, uh, the first couple of days when they move back in, just to make sure that, uh, they abide by the speeding regulations. Other than that, that's, uh, that's all I got.
Thanks, Chief. Don't believe the treasurer's here tonight, I don't see him. Department, uh, Board Member Comments, Mr. Sigun... Hook Town Accountant, Sarah. Sorry.
Really quick, um, good evening, and, um, I am settling in, um, without Deb, um, working through the clothes still, um, trying to get everything together for the balance sheet to be filed by the end of the month, and, um, all the required paperwork into the state with the gateway system. So, and also working closely with the treasurer-collector to, um, reconcile the accounts.
So, Sarah, how are we doing with VEDAR? Is that fully up and operational now?
Um, it's, it's new for me, and, um, there's some kinks we're working out right now, but, um, I, I like it, it's easier to use, and, um, I'm gonna be getting a little bit more training from the VEDAR folks to, um, just walk through the different functions and how the system all falls together in the documentation, so, um, it, it's good.
I know Mark was working closely with Deb Tibido on that, so hopefully utilizing, getting what we paid for, and I understand.
Yeah, yeah, they, they've been very receptive and helpful, so, we'll get there. It, it is an improvement, I'm sure, so.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for the Town Accountant?
If you need any help to say so, and, uh, we'll do our best for you.
Okay.
Sorry, did I miss any other department heads that wish to speak? Seeing none. Board Member Comments, Mr. Sigunovich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanna thank the people from the Fisher, Fish Road area for coming out tonight. Please, keep coming. Um, don't take our lack of speech as... Well, I don't know a better way to say it, so I'll just say it, of not caring, 'cause that's not true, absolutely not true. We, we have to be careful what we say, we have limited, this Board has limited power on what we can do. The DEP is, I, I know you've heard it a thousand times, I'll say it again, the DEP is the leading force, so I encourage you. Uh, I, I know we didn't, uh, we, we can't get something written out in time because of printing, postal, what have you, but let your neighbors know, we're gonna do everything we can to let them know, September ninth, like Mr. Sullivan said, or Mr. Ruder, or maybe both, maybe even Mr. Landry or Mr. James. We, yeah, if we have to open up that back piece, if we have to have another room, if we, whatever we have to do, reschedule it, move up to the school, whatever we have to do, because, yeah, I mean, the health and safety of our residents, that's kind of a big deal, and, yeah. I don't wanna get in trouble, so I'll stop there, thank you.
Mrs. DeShanes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think Mr. Sigunovich said it all, so I'm all set.
Mr. Landry?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I just wanna, I agree with Kerry, um, we're, we're all residents up here too, we're all affected by, as I said, where I live now, I'm on Town Water, I was living on Schofield years ago on a well. George and the Water Department has been ahead of the curve, matter of fact, we had Mary Jude here several years ago, and she complimented Dudley Water on being ahead of the curve, and we got into the process a lot quicker than a lot of towns, and you know, we're gonna get there, we're gonna do the best we can, it's, it's a front, it's a hot-button issue, we're not, it's not sliding off to the side, it's, it's good to be at every meeting, I, I encourage people to come, with your questions, if we can give you an answer, we'll give you an answer. If we don't have it, we'll try to get it, it's something that we all take very seriously. But I appreciate everyone that came tonight. And before we go into executive session, I just wanna make a comment about that. It brought to my attention that some people seem to think that because we have executive session, it's a, uh, movement against transparency, nothing could be further from the truth. We go into executive session for specific reasons, it is limited by the state what we can go in for. Uh, we put the general reasoning along with the applicable Mass General Law section, and for someone to put out there that we are trying to be not transparent is totally false. I encourage them to bring their concerns to the Board, to the table, not to, uh, throw a dart at the wall and try to say we're not doing something we're not supposed to be doing. So at that point, I will ask the Board for a motion to move into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Subsection A, Subsection One, not to reconvene an open session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than a professional competence of an individual, or to discuss discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual police department matter. Roll call, vote.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Sigunovich, second by Mr. Landry, roll call.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
Janet DeShane, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye. Have a good night, everyone, thank you for coming.